So, this is the St. Louis Park High School Chamber Orchestra that just played. And the two pieces that we played, we actually just performed a couple of weeks ago at... Oh, you want me to talk into the microphone? Okay. So, uh, the... Wow, that's really loud. Um, so the two pieces that we just played, uh, we actually performed at the... I'm so awkward. Um, we actually just performed a few weeks ago at the Minnesota State High School League Solo Ensemble Competition, uh, that we actually hosted here at the high school. Um, we had just under 700 students from 13 different schools come and perform for eight adjudicators throughout the evening, and it was really, really amazing. Um, anyways, the Chamber Orchestra is our top group here at the high school. Uh, entrance is by audition only, um, and, uh, we actually received a superior rating for our performance, uh, this year, so... And I just want to add that these kids are extremely devoted to the program, um, especially for Chamber Orchestra, because they have to wake up at 6:45 a.m. for rehearsal twice a week, and they're there, and they practice, and that's how we get better, so, yay.
And Marion, we'd like to recognize the orchestra people with a certificate, and if you would read this, what they're being recognized for, and because we're crowded in here, when you hear your name, just wave so we know who you are, okay? And we'll get these to you afterwards.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. Okay, so, if they're not here, should I not read them off?
I would read them.
Okay, so, uh, this is for Clara Slade, who I don't think is here this evening. Uh, she plays violin. Uh, Emma Duda for solo. Yay! Um, Maggie Coleman, I don't think she's here either this evening. Uh, Benji Wyberg, who's behind me. Uh, Lucas Reed, who is unable to play with us this evening. Uh, Garrett Wells, who's behind me. Miranda Van Pilsom Johnson. Daniel Tacata. Claudia Skrogan. Ora Raymond. Where are you, Ora? Wave. Justin Kotke. Sorry, there's a paperclip crisis here. Zoe Kedrowski. Vivian Huestad.
The paperclip crisis is because some of the students had multiple awards.
Right, right, so it's a happy problem, really. Um, Alec Hill. Olivia Grudler. Elizabeth Glennon. Aiden Foner. Kate Dirksen. And Graham Anderson.
And then the last, the last thing I will say, in Ms. Eggers', to Ms. Eggers' credit, eight years ago, I remember looking at the orchestra numbers, and there were 35 students in orchestra.
Five years ago.
Five years ago, thank you. I'm remembering longer. Um, and I heard that next fall that there's over 90 students in orchestra here at the high school alone, so, want to congratulate Ms. Egger and Mark Anderson, the elementary orchestra director, who is fantastic, and as a team, the numbers have just grown dramatically, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And thank you all, wonderful students. And then I think we can give you a few minutes to...
Chair, we can be out of here pretty quick.
Pick up and...
Yeah. We're magical like that. Yeah. Thank you so much for having us this evening, too. We appreciate it.
There, there's pizza. Pizza for you guys if you want it. Bunch of eggs for pizza.
If you make up, if you come find Kinsey, she's got pizza for the orchestra that was left over from our meeting with the high school students, so...
All right, I'll let the, uh, the last two board members file back in here. They, the orchestra were sort of the pied-pipers, I suppose, and they just kind of followed them, uh, out the door, but, uh, so we started, uh, this, this evening with a 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock meeting with the high school students downstairs. This is a yearly meeting that the board does, invites a good cross-section of the, of the high school students, and we always get, and this year was no exception, a great conversation of, of both the positives and the negatives at the, at the, at, uh, both the high school and the schools in general, and some good feedback on how to improve those things, and, and it was just a wonderful conversation. We came up here, and the orchestra was playing, so we kept it at a really high level, and we're going to continue at that high level with Andy Ewald, uh, talking about the Athena Award winner.
Thanks, Joe. So each year, um, there's an Athena Award winner from each school, and what the Athena Award is, is for the top female athlete in each school, and the east side of the river has one over there where they recognize them with the St. Paul Public Schools and the eastern suburban schools, and then there's also one for the Minneapolis Schools and the West Metro Schools. And about a week and a half ago, we had the banquet at the Doubletree in Bloomington for all the West Metro and Minneapolis Athena Award winners. Um, ours was Emmy Jeong. Um, Amanda Forsberg, who's one of our swimming coaches, is here to talk tonight about Emmy specifically, and we'll invite Amanda up, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Emmy. Uh, so it's my pleasure to introduce Emmy, who's this year, as Andy said, Athena Award winner. She has been a member of the high school team for six years, so it means she started in 7th through 12th grade. Uh, in that time, she helped us win four conference championships, a couple of years going undefeated. Uh, she also qualified for state five out of the six years. She, um, won academic, or, yeah, she won Academic All-Conference this year. She also won six times, uh, uh, All-Conference, which is voted within the conference, it's just by PowerPoints and time. Uh, and then this year, she also added captain, and the team voted her hardest worker. And then outside the pool, she actually has very strong academics. She's in numerous IB and AP classes. She is at an NHS, and she is a National Merit finalist. And next year, she'll be attending my alma mater, Lawrence University, so I'm very happy about that, where she will continue swimming. So again, congratulations on a phenomenal high school career. I could not be prouder of you. So, congrats. You can come up here.
And her mom and dad are here, and they've been, um, great supporters of St. Louis Park Athletics and St. Louis Park Schools, so if you guys could stand up, please, just for a second. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, next up, I'd like to have Sarah Lindenberg come up and talk about the Rose Reese Award winner.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name's Sarah Lindenberg. I teach at the high school here. I teach civics and AP psychology, and, uh, every year, the social studies department has the opportunity to nominate, uh, student for the Rose Reese Award. It's an 80-year celebration of the award as well, um, and Amra Musik was selected as our recipient this year. Uh, the Rose Reese Award has a long history in the greater Minneapolis area. It's always awarded to, uh, a, a student from each high school of about maybe 13 or so metro schools, and, uh, we always have a conversation as a department, and our, I'm here representing our social studies department as Amra was selected to be our recipient this year. Uh, I had the privilege of being able to teach her last year in AP US History. Uh, she's a very dedicated and devoted student, but then the, the biggest reason we nominated Amra is for her dedication to the St. Louis Park Bird Feeder, which is an in-house food shelf for students of our high school, and then that's sort of her local scope, but her greater scope is, uh, to social work. She wants to go on to study social work and has an interest in sort of her heritage in Bosnia as well, so I'd like to recognize Amra Musik for receiving the Rose Reese Award this year.
All right, so we will try to continue to stay at that high level for the remainder of the, the evening. It'll be hard to, hard to match what we've, uh, we've heard and seen so far. Uh, just to go through the, uh, agenda for this evening, we have the call to order, and then the approval of the agenda, uh, open forum, if there are any people to speak, uh, at open forum tonight. We have the superintendent's report. The discussion items are the enrollment projection update from Hazel Reinhardt, uh, schoology updates, quarterly budget updates, the 2016-17 school calendar review, and then a policy development first reading of new policy 799, post issuance compliance policy procedures. That one might not match the level of what we've seen so far, but we'll find out. Uh, and then we will have the consent agenda. There are no items on the action agenda for tonight, communications and transmittals, and then adjournments. Uh, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. All right, uh, that thing was clarified. Do, uh, did I hear a motion yet?
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Six, excuse me, that's why I'm here, in this seat, is that it's only six tonight. Julie Schweitzer is not here this evening. Um, so, next up is open forum. I don't see any sheets or anybody wanting to speak at open forum, or are there anybody? Uh, seeing that there are no open forum participants tonight, we'll go to the superintendent's report, Superintendent Metz.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to use my superintendent report tonight to speak to the high school principal hiring process and ask Scott Myers to make his way to the podium. Uh, later on in tonight's consent agenda, there's going to be a recommendation from me to the board to, to select Scott Myers as the next high school principal at St. Louis Park High School. Scott has worked in St. Louis Park for 14 years. He started out as a middle school science teacher. Uh, I got to know him first as a summer school principal at the high school. From that position, he moved on to become the assistant principal at the high school, and from that position, moved on to become the interim high school principal this year at the high school, and all those positions, Scott has performed very well. The thing I like the most about Scott is that he's a thoughtful decision-maker, a very good listener, considers all points of view, connects to students very well, and I think most of all, truly cares about St. Louis Park. Um, we see school leaders of all, uh, kinds, and we're lucky here in St. Louis Park to have so many wonderful school leaders, and Scott's going to be a tremendous new addition, so, Scott, I'd like you to just, if you have a moment, to say a couple of words.
All right. Well, thank you for that introduction, first of all. I will say, um, it's been a, it's a huge honor to work in St. Louis Park, uh, being that I came from a smaller town, and sorry if the board has heard this before, because I've mentioned, made mention this before, but, uh, I'd just like to share once again, you know, coming to St. Louis Park and hearing about the small-town feel, um, there's so much more to St. Louis Park. There's the small-town portion of it, but there's also the community piece and taking advantage of opportunities, so, um, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue some of the momentum and the work we've done, our, with our bar program, uh, our graduation rate, increasing our graduation rate, um, incorporating and aligning new curriculum, um, and so, it's, it's been an honor to work here, and I look forward to continuing here in the park.
All right, thank you, thank you, Scott. We look forward to many more years of, of great achievements in this school district. Thank you for all you've done, and thank you for what you're going to be doing at the high school. Uh, the first item on the discussion items is the enrollment projec- projection update. Uh, Ms. Reinhardt, if you want to take to the mic.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, board members, superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here. There will be a PowerPoint at the back, which, uh, looks quite dark to me at this, uh, point in time, but, um, uh, hopefully you have it closer and will be able to see it. I'll start out with a, with a summary of the findings and then look at some of the details. The public schools in St. Louis Park had an 8.7% increase. I say 10 years, you know, technically it's nine. Um, and resident enrollment increased about 8.1% in, uh, one less year, and then, uh, non-residents made up 12.5% of your K-12 enrollment, so, uh, this is a district with a pretty substantial percentage of students who are non-residents. And the school age population in the district has increased as well, and based on the estimate of the school age population, I would estimate that the St. Louis Park Public Schools capture 74.2% of the school age population, and that is a little below the state average, but is, um, a pretty typical here in the metro area, where, uh, capture rates tend to be, uh, lower than they are in, in some of greater, greater Minnesota districts. In the enrollment projections, uh, I'm projecting a 10 to 13.5% increase in the next 10 years. That's a little faster rate than what you've had, and that takes, uh, a student count, uh, K-12 from, uh, uh, what do we have? A 4,0583 students in 2000, fall of 2014, to 5,034, to 5,200. And in all of these projections, most of the increase is coming at the high school level, uh, and that's based really on, uh, where your students are today. You, you have a large number of students to age into those grades, so anticipate some significant growth at the high school. I also made projections by race, ethnicity, uh, looking at white students and minority students, uh, projecting that minority students will be 43.5% of the K-12 student body in five years. That's, um, a percentage that's now emerging as, I'd say, fairly typical in the sort of inner-ring suburbs. Um, and then I looked at, uh, free and reduced lunch projections. Now, these are, are the least reliable, first of all, because, uh, eligibility can change, but also, uh, the economy has a large effect on, on the number of students who qualify, but, uh, based on, on the projections, and especially what's happening with kindergarten, uh, I'm projecting that that population will increase from 35.7% of the, uh, student body to 37.6 in five years. Uh, again, that's fairly typical in, in what I'm seeing. And then I made in projections for, uh, the elementary schools, and all of them show increases except Peter Hobart, where there's a s- small decrease. However, if you look at the numbers, almost all of the increases at Aquila, Aqui... Aquila. So, uh, it's pretty much concentrated in a, in a single school. Here, I'm showing you graphically, uh, the dark blue line is total enrollment, and the light blue is, uh, resident enrollment, and the reason we don't have a resident enrollment for this year is we don't have the numbers, uh, yet, but you can see that, um, resident enrollment decreased and now is starting to increase, and that, uh, is what's driving also total enrollment up. Then I show you the numbers here, if you want to admire the numbers a bit, um, and again, we see that enrollment went down, it stayed there, and now it's been, uh, turning and moving upward. The rate of increase, uh, is not consistent year to year. There's nothing unusual about that, but, um, again, you see that the earlier years, 2005, '06, '07, had losses in enrollment, and now we've turned and started to have increases. Some years, uh, quite large percentages, others, uh, more modest. And then, uh, like all demographers, I'm very interested in what is driving this change, and the column labeled natural increase/decrease looks at the difference in the size between the fall kindergarten class and the previous year's grade 12, and if it's a positive number, it means that the kindergarten was larger. If it's a negative, it means the kindergarten was smaller than the grade 12 of the previous year, and the net migration is, uh, an estimate of basically who may have moved in or out of the district, or moved from a public school to a non-public school, or open enrollment, and I can't separate out physical movement versus the transfers, uh, for choice. Uh, and again, you will see here that if you look at, at the natural increase/decrease, you can see that with the exception of one year, um, you had larger kindergarten classes than you had the previous year's grade 12, whereas at the net migration, you have a number of years that are minuses, pluses, which says that, that the, uh, student body, there's an element, at least, of the student body that's, that's fairly mobile. And sometimes it doesn't take a very large portion of that student body to be highly mobile to produce these kinds of positive and negative numbers. And the difference, of course, or the combination of the natural increase and the net migration... And the difference, of course, or the combination of the natural increase and the net migration produces the overall change. So, change here was really driven because your kindergarten classes are getting larger. Today, we have to remind ourselves of a couple of things in Minnesota. We've historically thought of enrollment changing because of demographic changes, key one being the age of the population, fertility rates, the level of residential development. But in Minnesota today, we also have to think about the education marketplace, because education choices are abundant here in Minnesota, and they are growing. We've always had non-public options, but today, it's really the public options of open enrollment and charter schools and the like that have, are having, in many, many districts, a substantial increase on what I would call the regular K-12 enrollment of the public schools. And then here I have a graphic that compares St. Louis Park with Minnesota statewide, and these data for 2013, '14. And you can see that you have a higher proportion of the estimated school-age population in this district enrolled in non-public options, especially traditional brick-and-mortar non-public schools. This is not a district that attracts, many families are not attracted to homeschooling here, that's a very small percentage. And then you can see in the public options, statewide, 7.4% of the school-age population is in, in open-enrolling, in or out. And at the statewide level, it always balances, but at a district, it doesn't necessarily. And you had 12.5% of your enrollment coming in, and of the population in the district, school-age population, 9.6%, who might have attended the St. Louis Public, St. Louis Park Public Schools, open-enrolled to another district. And then on charter schools, 4.7% statewide, 3.2% here. So, you can see, again, the, that there's a, a pretty healthy education marketplace in this community. And I like to remind people, 15 years ago or so, we didn't think about it very much. Today, it's very important, and we have to manage our image and our brand and how people think about us. Here, we're looking at enrollment numbers. There are a couple of things quickly that I point out that I always look at. The kindergarten line or row at the very top, and you can see that in 2005, '06, you had 319 kindergarten students, and then the numbers started to go up, bounced around a little bit, but were at a peak at 2012, '13, at 405, have fallen back a little bit, but this past year at 387. So, you can see the trend up. If you looked at it diagonally, you could see the way in which we estimate migration. And if you look at the column on the far right, which is 2014, '15, you can see here that the elementary grades are slightly larger than the secondary grades. And I like to calculate a simple measure of that. If we looked at the average grade, that's simply adding them up and dividing, we had 367 students in the average elementary, 328 in the middle school, and, and 349 in the high school. And what this distribution tells me is that you have some built-in growth momentum. Because that elementary, those are larger, and as they move through, that even if kindergarten were to remain near its current size, enrollment would go up. So, that's, so I, it's a way of saying that we can be fairly confident that enrollment will increase. That's the bottom line.
Hazel, that last average sheet, that's based on the current enrollment this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And what I'm looking for here is, is really, is there some built-in momentum? And how confident can we be that, that growth will occur? I'm looking here at some macro trends, and we always need to remind ourselves that we are entering into a very different era. And that is an era of an aging, aged population. That we, in the 2010 census, about 12.6% of all Minnesotans were over 65. By 2020, it's going to be probably about 17%. By 2025, it's probably going to be about 22%. So, when you start to think about that, that's a reality of life, and it's a basic tenet of demography, that once a population gets old, it never gets young again. So, I mean, that's something to remember. And just to put it into a global context, China has a rapidly aging population, and in 2030, China will have the same percentage of its population over the age of 60 as the United States. By contrast, India is substantially younger. So, some, some ways of thinking about what's happening. And the United States is much younger than Europe or Japan. And we can see ourselves growing old, and of course, we can thank the baby boomers for that. What's, are some of the practical implications of that? Well, we're going to have a decrease in the school-age population per household. What that really means is that we're going to lose sort of density of households with children. Or I say, the bus has to travel farther to get its load of kids, probably will drive transportation costs from parents' point of view, driving more for playdates and making more arrangements of that kind. And then we're in a rather interesting point right now in the population, because of the small size of Gen X, that it's going to have an effect on the housing market and the demand for single-family detached units, because that was an important, that age group was an important component of driving the housing market in the previous decade, and it's not going to have, pack that kind of punch in this, in this decade. And we're already seeing this because multifamily units have been so much more robust. So, that's something else we'll see. Now, we expect that births will increase in this decade into the next, as the large Gen Y or millennial population comes into its prime childbearing. In the United States, and here in Minnesota, and especially here in the metro area, people are delaying marriage, they're delaying childbearing, and we once thought of maybe median age of, of bearing a child for a woman might be 26 or so. Now, for a college-educated woman, and this metro area has many of them, it's around 30. So, it just, it just delays what's happening. But we expect another sort of enrollment cycle. And we had our largest class of high school seniors in 1978 in Minnesota, the peak of the baby boom. The peak of the millennials was 2009, and we would expect another peak sometime out in the 2040, '42, somewhere in that timeframe. So, my point is that you can look at what's happening to enrollment, but if you take a very, very long view, you would think of it going up. I'm making these projections via cohort survival. Method has a lot of strengths. Its weakness is that it's very slow to capture large numbers of additional housing units. But the units that yield, school-age children, are single-family detached. So, if you don't have much growth in that, you're not going, that's not going to give you a lot of lift. One of the things that this community probably needs to keep its eye on is what is the rate of teardown? Because teardowns produce a high yield of school-age children. They, they are very similar to brand-new units, because that's in fact what they are. And so, people build units that meet the specs of, of young families today. Move on here to resident births. The key word here is resident, because on the birth certificate, the mother then said that she was a resident of Minnesota, of Hennepin County, of St. Louis Park, Minnesota, with the address. And a lot of work and time is spent at the national estate level to get this all sorted out. And as you can see here, we had an increase in births up to 2007, and in 2007, in the United States and Minnesota, we had the largest number of births since 1964, was not nearly that number, but, well, it was that number, but not at the height of the baby boom in Minnesota, which was about 59. And then births due to the recession decreased, and you can see, I've bolded out, if you can see that, where the state and Hennepin County and suburban, suburban Hennepin County peaked. But that was not the peak for St. Louis Park. For St. Louis Park, it was way down in 2012. So, what that says is that, that births have continued to, to move up here. They haven't quite followed the state pattern. All of this is preparatory to making kindergarten projections, and the city of St. Louis Park and the school district are virtually coterminous. So, I've used the city data as the proxy for the school district. And I've created a pool, and by that I mean, I've adjusted the births, which are reported on calendar year, to the school year, because about a third of the students are, are not age five at, on September 1st. So, adjusted that. And so, you see in the column under city pool, the pool of, of children that I'm estimating should be available to enter kindergarten. And then under the percentage, you see the percentage that entered the St. Louis Park Public Schools. Actually, these percentages, you may think move around a little bit, but they're actually pretty stable, and they have been for the last couple of years. Now, what these numbers tell me, however, is that even when we put on the non-public and the open enrollment, there are a portion of children born in St. Louis Park who never enter kindergarten here or a school located here, that they, they have, the family has moved somewhere else between the birth and the entry of kindergarten. And the population, the preschool population is far more mobile than the school-age population. That is, parents make a decision to move at that preschool, in those preschool years. And then you see, of course, the kindergarten year. I'm using these data to try to get a purchase on estimating kindergarten, and I've averaged some of these to stabilize them. And the low assumption for kindergarten is the average of the past two years, which was 55.6% of that pool, and the average, I'm using the highest, the average of the past five years, which is 57.1%. And then longer term, I've made the assumption that St. Louis Park will be 4.1% of the Hennepin County projected resident births. The highest it's been in the last 15 years is 4.2%. It's fallen back from that. The caveat I would make here is if that percentage would go higher, which is where is the distribution of births as births increase in Hennepin County, then the possibility that kindergarten could be a little larger than I projected. Okay? That's, and then here are the kindergarten projections. And what you will see, and if you go back to the pool, you'll see that the pool decreases for a couple of years, and then it increases. So, basically, what you have is the low projection is, is not reaching the current level until about 2024, '25. So, it's a little lower. The high projection puts you at the current level by, well, 2018, '19, '17, '18. So, it gets you back to where you are. We assume that that dip will occur because of what's happened with, with births, but everybody see that. I mean, that's one of the big differences here. And then I look at the migration. Couple of important things here, that I don't want to say make you unusual, per se, but they're worthy of note. One is the minus numbers at the K-5. Most districts that have growth have positive numbers there. And that tells us how important that size of your kindergarten class is and how it needs to increase, because you're losing students in that, in that elementary. And usually, that's where you need to pick up students, okay, is at the elementary. At the middle school, the losses are very small, you know, minus five, minus four. And then at the high school, interestingly, early on, you had big losses, and now later, you have really stabilized that. So, what this says to me is that you're becoming more adept at retaining high school students, which is a good thing. And here we see it by grade, and one of the interesting things now is what's going to happen to that net migration number now that we have all-day, free all-day kindergarten? Because basically, we had some movement around, kids would be at, at some private kindergarten, and our, our daycare and would stay there for kindergarten, wouldn't move in as long as it had to pay, once it's free. I mean, I can tell you of some very affluent districts that had only one or two children who did not avail themselves of the free all-day kindergarten, when they had expected that there would be a large number who wouldn't. So, we can see that that's very popular. So, we don't know quite what will happen there. I've bolded out eight to nine. You have a pattern very typical for the state of Minnesota, and that is, you have an inflow of students into the public high school. Then I converted the migration to survival rates. Anything below one, of course, this means you have a loss at one or above. One, 1.000 is the same number, age to the next grade, and more than one, you can see what the percentage of increase is. And then I move on to the projections, show it to you graphically. And what's important to me here is that in the early years, basically doesn't matter what the assumptions are. The numbers are very close to each other. But as we move out in time, you can see the effect the different assumptions have. And the important thing, of course, is that you have to make a decision on where you want to aim. And then here are the numbers. I'll look at the numbers. And then if we divide it into the elementary, secondary, middle school and secondary. And here, what we see, of course, is that at K-5, not much change in the first five You, you get, what, about 75 more students in five years under the highest assumption. When we go out to the second five years now, there we see some pickup all, all along. What, where you see the big change, of course, is in six to eight, we have that immediate bump in this next five years, and then after that, it tails off as we age in those slightly smaller cohorts that were in elementary. And then look at the high school numbers. Under the highest projections, you would be at 1,700 in 10 years. And again, you know, if you look, I'd say, the lowest of the high school projections is almost a given. That's pretty safe. So, substantial increase in the high school. On the projections by race, ethnicity, and free and reduced meals, the projections for the white and minority populations were made independently. And then what I'm showing you here, which I, really improving to myself, and then wanting And then, what I'm showing you here, which I really am proving to myself, and then wanting to convince you that these are, these projections track, is to look at the difference between the sum of the two independent projections, vis-à-vis the district-wide, which was also an independent projection. So that I know that my, doesn't make them right, but it means that they're tracking and that it, one is not being, driving something out of whack. Okay? What makes you a little different than many other districts is that you show some growth in the white population. Many entering suburbs are not having a growth in the white population at all. It is declining, so you have some growth here. The minority population in Minnesota as a whole, in the metro area, is a growing population. It's a suburbanizing population. So I think it's, you know, again, it's a given that it will increase. And then, you see the free and reduced lunch. And then, here, we look at some ways of looking at it. The percent of increase increases a little bit, and then, the distribution shifts a little bit.
Hazel?
Yes?
Do these assumptions all?
Figuring what our factor is for opening enrollment, do you keep those figures?
Well, what that actually does, embedded in this is the assumption that that percentage will somehow remain at its current level or close to it. Another option would have been to project resident enrollment and then total enrollment. And I could still do that.
Because one, we have control over, and one, we don't.
Right. What we see is that your resident enrollment is going up. Okay? And I could do that for you. I could make a resident enrollment. I do for some districts. Some districts don't even want the total enrollment projected. They want only their resident enrollment projected. And I could do that for you, if you'd like.
I would be interested in seeing what the projection, if that factor that Jim was referring to is the open enrollment, the one that we can play with, I'd be interested in seeing what that would look like if we played with it more. Also, my question would be, you said 12.5% of open enrollment is high. Is that compared to what type of district?
Well, I usually say anything over 10% is high. There are a lot of districts here in the metro that are under 10. And then, there are some that are huge. And, well, I'll talk about one of your neighbors, which I've, and it's the most interesting thing I've ever seen. I say that nobody is pleased with the school district they live in. And that's Hopkins. There's a huge flow out, and there's a huge flow in.
Is it net out or out?
The net loss, but not that huge. But a massive flow. We know, of course, that there is a massive flow out of Minneapolis. Okay?
So I suspect that Hopkins is more like 25%?
Yeah.
Open enrollment?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, but if we were to push ours a little bit?
Well, let's say Bloomington was at five or six. They have allowed it to go up because their resident enrollment is going down. So they've allowed the number to go up. Edina runs a higher percentage. Wayzata, of course, had to close it now, so that number is going down in Wayzata. Minnetonka has, its resident enrollment goes down. They are managing it by open enrollment. If I look at, at south of the river, most of them are below that percentage, below a 10. Same in Carver County. Most of them, less than that. In Ramsey, of course, Ramsey is pretty much St. Paul. I mean, there's not... If you get into Washington, Stillwater has a huge flow out, not so much of a flow in. South Wash is huge, you know, 18,000 students, 19,000 students, you know, so it gets washed. Then, we have the small, little boutique districts like Montamidi, which have a pretty substantial flow in, or St. Anthony, which is about 50/50. Anoka County, you again, have that huge giant of Anoka-Hennepin.
So I would be more interested in, like, St. Anthony and that type of school. Is there pretty close to us there?
Well, that is really a small enrollment district.
Smaller than us?
Spring Lake Park.
Spring Lake Park has net in. You know, I don't know. I did them, I can't recall. But they have a net in, Spring Lake Park, and it's still rapidly growing. But what, but what open enrollment does is it allows people to sort of decide where they want to go to school. And that's what makes, I think, managing one's brand so important these days. And I would also, I may be a little cynical, but I think the more choices people have, there are always people who will avail themselves of the next choice. Yes?
I think, I think just, we would like to see that data, just.
Okay. Then I need to, then you need to get me the resident numbers. Yeah. But we can do that. And here's the free and reduced meals. In the metro area, there is a correlation in free and reduced with minority students. That correlation does not exist as strongly in greater Minnesota, interestingly, but it does here. And then, here, you see the projections by school. And again, if you want, you know, if you want district-wide only projections for resident or whether you want it down to the school, I don't know. But that can, that is doable. What I've had happen recently is I now am saying in proposals that if more than 10% of your enrollment is non-resident, you know, send me your non-resident, your resident numbers, because I've been dealing with districts, for example, in Stearns County, some of them are 25 and 30% open enrolled students in. I mean, there's some just really thin, huge, huge percentages in some places. So that's, that's basically my report, recap. Enrollment, I see enrollment going up. I will say that even if you looked at resident enrollment, it's going to be going up. You have the ability here, of course, to manage your non-resident, if you so choose, a space often being a factor in it. There are a lot of unknowns. I thought, until a week ago, that the Southwest Light Rail was going to happen. And now, I'm, I'm not so certain what's going to happen. It certainly would make St. Louis Park even further attractive, and I think its location already makes it very attractive. And if it were to have really an effect on the school-age population, I would see it as stimulating more teardowns and building larger units. Because one of the, I'll use the word handicap, this district has. It has such a high proportion of units built immediately after the Second World War. And they don't have the square footage, they don't have the number of bathrooms, they don't have the garage space that a middle-income family wants these days. And people will put the money into remodeling and teardowns and the like for a location, for a school, those sorts of things. So that's, but that's a, that's a big unknown. And it was scheduled originally to come online about 2020, which wouldn't affect the near-term projections, but it would the longer term. And I think now, it's unlikely that anybody's going to put a shovel into the ground until they see that that's really happening. I don't know that too many people are going to speculate. I mean, if they're holding land and property, they already hold it. But I mean, I don't know that anybody's going to be buying now until they know what's going to happen. Any other questions?
So I know it's kind of an inexact science here, a little math involved, but I know, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm just wondering, kind of, you did this for us, was it six, eight years ago, maybe? Six, six years ago?
Yeah, maybe six. Time slips by.
And my recollection is that there was, we were going to be losing some students for a while. And I'm just wondering, and then, that was before the recession and all that kind of thing.
Well, and you did. If you looked, your enrollment did go down.
And that's what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
Just looking back, I wondered, did you assess it, kind of, where your projections were compared now?
I didn't look at this district in particular. I've looked at some others. Basically, do fairly well. The place that's the diceiest are these rapidly growing districts at the fringe, for example, Hudson, Wisconsin, where I've spent a lot of agonized time. It's very hard, you know, and the recession just really ended everything there. Then, you have a district like Wayzata that the recession didn't have all that much impact. I mean, development just continued at pretty high price points and just chugged along. So I think anytime you're, the excerpts now are very, very unclear. Here, you're essentially built out. So what, you know, we have to get turnover to get growth is really what.
I said that was, that's pretty difficult, because once you're in an older city, you're an older city, is what I heard you say.
Yeah. Once you're an older population, you're an older population. People were very optimistic, you know, that if they put in housing for the elderly, the elderly would just move to those new units. Well, a few do, but it's an economic issue, because often, they cannot realize from their existing units what it takes to move into new construction. Many times, I'd say the change is more likely to happen when people get to their mid-80s. Okay? And, and one spouse may have passed, and the other is faced with, most often, a female surviving and children saying whatever, "Oh, mother, the furnace, the this, the that", you know, and then she agrees to move. So I think if we look at it, people make that decision, maybe in their late 50s, early 60s, about retirement time or approaching it, or they stay where they are until they get quite elderly.
Hazel, I have a couple of themes I just want to run by you and look for a knot of the head, if I'm...
Okay.
When I read this, this is what I picked up. And I just want to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly. That because of the recession and some low birth rates four or five years ago, the next couple of kindergarten classes might be a little small.
Yes.
Because there just are fewer four- and five-year-olds.
Everywhere in the country.
Yes.
So they can't just suddenly move to Minnesota either.
Yeah. But then, that will pick up again.
Yes.
After that little bump goes through. That in the elementary, the growth that happens could be concentrated in one part of our city, near Aquila School. That's where the growth is appearing in your projections, which could be important for us to know. And then, some immediate growth at the middle school, just because some, the larger classes are rolling through the middle school first. And then, later, some bigger growth at the high school. So those are the, kind of, the themes I'm taking away from this presentation?
Those are the correct themes to take away, yes.
With the assumption of open enrollment being at or near what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those are kind of the same questions I had, but I want to get into the question about, so you're projecting roughly, if you take the 10 years, it looks like about 60 per year, we're going to increase. Of course, that's going to be towards the tail end, higher than the front end, as Mr. Metz just pointed out. Do you see, not in your numbers, but just see anywhere else, any other things that could happen that could spike our enrollment, other than the open enrollment? Meaning, like, city, city planning? They're going to add some more buildings where kids could, could come in? We change our programs where we attract more of our in-city kids to stay? Anything like that?
I think, I think there's always the opportunity to retain a higher percentage of your students. Now, I say that, and it's not quite as simple as that, because you need to know what's driving them to leave. Whether it's some particular program, whether they don't like the principal at a given school, that somebody had something else, or maybe my aunt or my grandmother, who can look after me after school, lives in another district. Because there are a lot of personal reasons that you can, but clearly, middle-income and upper-middle-income parents are looking at school performance and school environment in the way that they did not look at it even five years ago.
My last question.
What else are they looking for in terms of environment?
The soft reputation. You know, what's the word on the street?
I'd also, I know that you said that you...
You know, people look at the, at the test scores. They honestly do. And I've been told by developers now that a property in certain school districts has really declined in value based on the test scores of those school districts. Yeah. Oh, oh, it's serious, it's serious business, because, and the eastern metro, South Wash has not, had not said, set the boundaries for the one high school. Can't sell property until that's decided. Nobody wants to buy it. As though that line is forever set in stone. I mean, that's the, but, yeah, people are getting very conscious of things.
Okay. And you had mentioned that you didn't have a chance to take a look at our last projections. Could, could you make that available so I can see it? I didn't see the last ones either.
Yeah. Somewhere in my computer file, I guess they are. She has it, yeah. Yeah.
Hazel, I wanted to push a little bit more on that. We have very clearly attempted to brand our school, our district. You, you mentioned, you know, the opportunity to retain a higher percentage of residents. What's the word on the street? I mean, how are we perceived within the community? Test scores? Any other key ones that stand out to you that other districts have used or that we should use?
The one that I hear about that can be very disruptive is student behavior. The one that I hear about that can be very disruptive is student behavior. If the word is that, that the student body is unruly, there are discipline problems, that's a negative. But, I mean, it gets down to the, people are going, saying, "Talk to your principal, talk to your teachers, get a sense of what the school is like." I mean, this is, this is what I hear on the street when people are talking about this. This is what developers are telling people now. Go to your school, talk to the principal, talk to the teachers, get your sense, get your own sense of, of the climate at the school. So I, you know, I'm an old person. When I went to school, you just went to school and that was, that was it. Now it truly is becoming a, a choice. People are making, choosing it like they are any other consumer product or service.
At some point in your report, you talked about, "We're going to hit a point in time, generationally, where we have more sellers than buyers." Is that unique to St. Louis Park? Did you see that?
No, that's, that's, uh, in fact, even a national phenomenon. And there are some housing experts who have written quite extensively on it. And I suppose part of it is a philosophical thing, but a sense that, um, a number of the McMansions may be hard to sell as we get into the 2020s. So, no, it's not, yeah, but it, but it could well be. So, yes, that's a... But housing, uh, housing is very, very important. I like to say it's like DNA.
Hazel, I had one more on the, we, we deal, the city council really are, are peers with us. We work together. We make it very clear to them that the value of housing in the city is dependent upon how good the schools are. At one point, I thought it was about 50/50. The schools were responsible for the value of the homes. I was corrected by one of the city council members, says, "No, it's more like 70%." Do you throw a percentage at it? Is there, is that a possibility? And the second part to the question, is there something we can encourage the city council to do for housing? I heard you say, "The more teardowns we have, it's like a new house." And we ought to, we should work with them and push on that, it sounded like.
Well, um, I don't throw out a percentage. I have done some work with developers and they increasingly tell me that the, the school is almost everything. That it doesn't matter whether you have school-aged children or not. If you don't have school-aged children, you believe that the reputation and, and stature of the schools retain your property value. Okay, and if you have children, obviously you have a, a firsthand interest. And they're saying that that even applies to sort of townhomes and the like where late-middle-aged people will move, is that the reputation of the school district affects those buyers as well because they think that that, that in a good reputation, high-reputation district, their value will be maintained and they will have an easier time selling. Okay? I don't know that there's any data, but that's the perception of people. The issue of teardowns, you know, they're kind of controversial because some people want to preserve the character of a neighborhood. I can simply tell you, the numbers I've seen is that when a teardown occurs, it's like a new unit and you get families with school-aged children. So, um, and one of the big challenges, well, and I can tell you that if you look at a house built in 1952 in St. Louis Park versus one built in 1952 in Richfield, or if you look at maybe those built in nine, later fifties in East Bloomington, they command a much higher price in St. Louis Park. Now, it may be the schools, but it, also the, this great proximity to Minneapolis, to the lakes. I mean, this is a, a well-positioned, it's the schools. So...
All right, God's country. So, um, uh, thank you very much. Anything else from the board as superintendent? Thank you very much for that report. It was very useful to dig into this data. It sounds like we have a couple actions. Well, the main action was the resident enrollment projection, and Rob will work with you on that. I think the main thing that's kind of implied in that, from our perspective, is capacity and how much space we have for, for students. So, uh, thanks again.
Thank you. I would also tell you, from what I've observed, that main, that managing open enrollment is not quite as easy as it sounds also. I've had clients, you know, that said, "Okay, we're going to stop taking kindergarten kids" or "Stop taking students entering the high school." But alas, then they have the siblings somewhere and they had the agreement that siblings could enter. And then they found that, that the numbers went up anyway. And so then they had to get, say, "Absolutely no one else is entering." So, I mean, it's not, not quite as easy as it sounds on first blush, brush.
I agree, Hazel. Sometimes they find the small little apartment to rent and have a residence.
Yes, and we also know that people lie. I mean, we wouldn't want to say that out loud, would we? But...
On, on that note, we'll trans, uh, head over to the Schoology update. No, uh, perfect segue, no. We have Kerry Ross, Director of Teaching and Learning, Tom Marble, Director of our Informational Services, Nate Tangen, and Angela Franzen. They will present on Schoology after a slight technical transition, which should be easy with this crew.
While we're setting up, I just want to say, we are not part of those people that lie. We are going to tell you only the truth.
As we're setting up the presentation, I'll just make a few quick introductory, introductory comments. It was about a year ago that we, the three of us stood in front of you to talk about implementing Schoology in our district, and we showed you our plan. We talked about a digital learning plan that was built on three tenants of anytime-anywhere learning, individual and personalized instruction, and, uh, dynamic versus static curriculum. And two of the big pieces that we'd be working on over the course of this year were the implementation of Schoology, which was going to be one of those key pieces of us to help build that, um, dynamic curriculum and help us with that anytime-anywhere access to learning, and also our wireless networks. So I'm happy to say that our wireless network project is, uh, you never say it's complete, but for all intents and purposes of this year, it's complete as we start bringing more and more things into our district. It will grow and adjust as, as it goes. But we're pleased with what we're seeing right now of, of what we've put in. So tonight, we're here to give you an update on progress over the course of this year with the implementation of Schoology and talk to you a little bit about, one of the things we presented to you last year was a tool we've been using called Brightbet's Clarity, which is a survey and a data tool that helps us understand the climate of our school district when it comes to the use of technology in the classroom and digital learning tools. So Nate Tangen and Angela Franzen, our two technology integrationists, are going to walk you through a few slides and talk about our implementation progress.
Hello. All right, I'm going to just quick give you an update and kind of a review of our timeline and support for this year. And again, Angela Franzen and I work primarily with the secondary schools, but Nate and I have worked quite conjointed this year, working with all staff as we've been going through our timeline and best delivering support. So we started off in August with our introduction. It was a good kickoff. And over time, you can see there, September, October, we worked on getting kind of, we had kind of small steps to get staff, just kind of their feet wet into the Schoology environment and get used to the terminology and how it worked. In December of 2014, we had an all-district day, which was kind of our very first time all together as a K-12 unit, looking at the different areas of Schoology and how it fits into the classroom and the things we could do with it. In January, we invited families in, and that was a pretty interesting time. And you'll see here in just a moment with Nate's analytics, of sharing kind of how that impacted our use of Schoology across the board. In March, we had another all-district professional development day, had a nice blend of equity focus as well as how our digital tools are impacting how we're delivering instruction. Went over very well, it was a very exciting day. And then through this next month, we're hoping that all students in St. Louis Park will have had at least one experience in Schoology. Many, of course, will have, have had lots more, but that is our goal, is to have all students with at least one experience. Just to show you a little bit of, here, I'm going to skip out here, of what the Schoology environment looks like at the classroom level. We have just a couple of key highlights here. This is an example of a seventh-grade language arts teacher, and this is what our Schoology page will look like for her. We've asked that staff put some kind of icon up in this left-hand corner that shows that that is an active course for families to take a note, to look into. And then this middle section is where you'll find content that is being completed in the course, and lots of different types of content. It's not just simply a link or a file. It can be all kinds of interactive activities that are sometimes graded in Schoology and sometimes just given information through Schoology. You can see this particular teacher has used, this is, I think, since about the end of February, at the time of semester rollover. So, um, calendar events are over on the right-hand side, and, and this is an example of that. What's that? Yes, and then our elementary version here. Go ahead, Nate.
Since I primarily work with the elementaries, highlighting the first-grade classroom, this particular teacher is Kelsey Oakey, first-grade teacher at Peter Hobart. And one of the things that we're looking at the elementary level is transforming the way that teachers are communicating with families. We know that the communication in the fall conferences isn't enough, so trying to give those families that snapshot of what's happening in the classroom. So I'm just going to show you a couple of highlights of, a couple of things that we saw on Kelsey's page. In her updates, one of the updates reads that the students explore, are explored with Cuisinart sticks. And I, I think when you think about a newsletter, if our families read that, a lot of families are wondering, "What is a Cuisinart stick?" And Kelsey can quickly throw on pictures so families can see that. Parents can set this up with an app on their phone, both Android and iOS, and they can get an alert directly to their phone that this image is there. And teachers are finding a nice level of ease being able to put these images in quickly. If they are choosing to use their personal device, it's a matter of seconds or minutes to quickly throw this on and just really give those families a quick snapshot of what's happening with their students' learning.
How do the parents know where to look for that? And then how many are we getting?
Great, that's a great question. So when we sent out the communication to families, that went out in January. So we know that we're just at the tip of that. So we, our digital learning team is really focusing on what we're going to do over the course of next year to get as many families in as possible. We know that a district mailing, being sent home at one time, is not enough. But the parents are getting there because they're attached to their kids. So when they sign up, all the kids in Ms. Oakey's room get a code that's tailored to their kid, and they can see through AM attendance those images. So they're automatically connected once they join Schoology. Tom knows the number for parents that are currently in. So we're right around 600. So we know we have a lot of work to do to get more families in, but we also know that this is a year of learning and teachers are beginning to put content within Schoology. Yep, push notifications. Humorously enough, a teacher put all the notifications turned on and a third-grade classroom, students between the hours of four and eight, took the liberty to continue adding to a discussion, and she received 72 text messages to her phone. So it was, so it was kind of, but it also shows where these kids are at. We're talking about a third-grade class that went home. They wanted to continue their learning after-school hours, which is pretty exciting.
So I was wondering, um, this could be to all of you. Those, um, parents that are pseudo-tech-savvy, that did not, has three kids in their district and has two on one device...
Total hypothetical.
A hypothetical situation. How do you combine all the kids into one device so you don't have to go and look? And how do you redo your profile?
Um, all students should be able to be seen under one account. So if you're not seen, if a hypothetical parent were not seeing all of those students under one account, we can help you with that. At this point, knowing that we're still definitely in rollout phase, there's lots of little pieces to catch up with, knowing that families aren't necessarily able to ask all the questions they want to ask or don't quite know where to go to ask all those questions. This fall, once we have a regular rollout with a regular school year start, we'll be able to address those, kind of those first-year questions as families are coming in for open house and able to go to the media center. We have a lot of troubleshooting under our belt now that we'll be able to address some of those specific questions. But that's a good question. You should be able to see all kids under one account and then be able to toggle between your students, so.
You'll post that somewhere so that those...
You got it.
...pseudo-tech-savvy people can look.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Come on, you guys all know I am the biggest Luddite in this room and I can do it on all my devices.
That is really great.
I, I do believe that the information that went home to parents, we did have something in there about adding additional students. You set up your account with the first one, and then you can go back in and add the second code and the third code. And, and I'm living that too.
Yes, and we, we certainly, we worked with Karen and Ms. Waters on figuring out how all of the students lined up in the system. And until you see it, it does kind of, it can be a little elusive until you see how it all toggles and works. So, um, as well as the classroom benefit that we've had, this was an example, this was from our March 23rd Day of Professional Development, and we brought in some great folks that collaborated and have been using Schoology across other districts as well. And this was an activity that actually all teachers involved in both sessions of the secondary and the elementary level did a sculpture strengths with a digital piece and aspect to that. So they were asked to have, they were given both like pipe cleaners and Play-Doh and things like that, and then they took a picture with their phone, uploaded it to Schoology. And it was a great model to show staff how instantaneously learning can happen and how you can actually see learning happening in another room at the same time. So I know it's a little difficult to see. There we go. So this is an example of some of the collaboration that was happening while staff were working. And that was a really cool experience to have both tangible activities in front of you that combined the digital aspect as well. I had a principal share with me last week that they have been trying a few different things, and one of them is sending a little birthday notice out to students via Schoology. And he commented that it's allowed for him to connect with kids in a very positive way that he wouldn't have necessarily done before. He didn't really have a way to reach out to the masses in that way. And kids come down and check in with him, and he really enjoys having kind of conversations about just what, what's up in their life and the things that they did for their birthday. So we've had lots of really good feedback of creative ways that staff and students and administrators are connecting with their students and families. There we go. And we'll move on to some analytics to give you an overview of how busy we've been.
All right, here's a snapshot of the data. This was taken last Wednesday. So the first number shows that 169,000, there have been 169,000 total visits. And I looked at it again just before we came up here today, and it's at about 174,000 right now. So just kind of give you an idea of what's happening with a, in a week-to-week basis. The, the trend lines, one of the things to note right away is that we see that drop-off. That's the April-May testing time. So we know that we were in the thick of testing, so we can kind of see that lab space, some availability devices went down during that testing time. If you notice, I mean, most of our trend lines go up. December's at, yep. So the green is students and the blue is faculty and the red is parents. So when we look at the students, it has been a steady increase. We get to the month of December, which was a short month. So that's why we see that little... We get to the month of December, which was a short month, so that's why we see that little bit of a dip. When we introduced Schoology to families in January, we saw that from February, March, and April, it averaged about a thousand visits by parents during that time. So we're picking that up, and we really are, we really find it promising to see the level of growth that we're continuing to see on this. One thing that stood out to me was the average time per visit of nine minutes and twenty-four seconds. The reason that stands out to me is that we know when people are going into Schoology, they're spending some time to look at things, to submit assignments, to check the updates, get an idea of what's going on in the classroom, so that's a pretty exciting number for me.
Recently, our digital learning team, which meets on, oh, sorry, our digital learning team, which are those of us who stand in here, and Sarah Thompson as well, we meet on a weekly basis to connect with each other and to keep our movement going forward and setting great goals for how we're going to deliver digital content in St. Louis Park. And one of the things that we've been working on recently are making sure that we have expectations set for staff clearly for the next school year. So this was a part of our plan along, we had a soft role this last year as we got staff comfortable with the Schoology environment. And now, starting this fall, we will have expectations in place for all levels. You can see we've separated it out into kind of natural lines there with early childhood to second grade, third to fifth grade, the secondary level, and then our specialists, so that every group has a set of expectations that makes sense for what they're doing. And so that we can ensure that our communication is consistent, which is one of the reasons that we went with Schoology in the first place was to make sure we have a consistent platform to work from. So those expectations will be rolling out to staff in the next few weeks.
This next slide is a dashboard from our data collection from the Clarity Brightbyte survey. This survey was administered over the course of three weeks. We had about six hundred parents complete the survey, so that number isn't as high as we'd like it to be. But in grades three through twelve, I would say we surveyed about eighty-four percent of the students, which is an extremely high number, and is a good representation of our, of our families that are out there, so we know that when I worked with a third grade class of thirty, that that matched our population in St. Louis Park, so when we received their responses, it could represent their family. We look at four areas in the case model, classroom access, skills, and environment. We actually increased slightly in this over the course of the year, and our teachers, we were at, all the teachers met statistically significant data. So we made sure that all our teachers took it, students, and the parents, again, we'd like it to increase. But this kind of gives us a framework of, for us to, for our work and our actions of areas we need to work on. In the area of classroom, we look at the four Cs, which is critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration. We know that's an area we need to grow in, and I'm not gonna get further into this data, but this, there's a lot to go through, and we'd be happy to show you more at another time.
And we continue to work on the area of access and equity and how that's going to fit into our strategic plan, and how all of this will work towards our, our question that we all have of what does greater access look like in St. Louis Park. So that is work that is ongoing and that this will all wrap into as we move forward with that process as well. Any questions?
I just have, I have a comment, but thank you for the examples and showing us a couple of screenshots for that. Just tying what we're doing here with what Hazel Reinhardt just told us, I, I have a colleague who is thirty-ish, and her child is almost three, and her next one's going to be born in August, and she tested, she looked at school test results to pick where they bought their next house. But this is not only gonna meet the needs of our current families, but I think what we're doing here and what we're building here is critical for meeting the, what I think are gonna be the real needs, if not demands, of the millennial generation and the parents, young parents that are coming that are very tech savvy and are gonna wanna know what's going on with their kids, and then they're gonna want this kind of access to the classroom. It's kind of an upgrade from what I got with my kid, which was a little note to take home, but it's the same concept, only better, so this is, this is really good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and actually Nate and I were recently given the honor of presenting at the National Schoology Conference in Chicago in July. So that'll be exciting for us to not only give and, to back to the community the things we've been learning, but to also see what other districts are doing across the country, so it's a great opportunity for us as well, it's very cool.
So the next steps is, so I know that all the teachers have put something out there. Are the next steps for them to be fully engaged in it, or has there some, some of the kids' teachers have some good stuff out there? And you can dig through and have some great information. Others is like, well, last time you updated was the beginning of the year, so.
Exactly, and that's what our expectations will hopefully ensure, that all staff are aware of what our expectations are, that we have consistent communication via Schoology, either with updates or materials in those courses, that going into fall, that that's a clear expectation, we've given them all the skills and the time that is needed to get going and get started. And we can only hope and continue to press in that that will happen.
So I'll add to that, that the superintendent asked Nate and Angela for a teacher-by-teacher report card to see how we were doing on implementation of Schoology. And so Nate and Angela followed up with every teacher, and teachers that needed that next little nudge to, to find an opportunity to use Schoology, also got to work with their principals to find that opportunity. So we're, we're continuing to nudge forward, we're increasing our expectations for next year, and our third year of implementation will be even better. We fully expect this to take at least three full years of support and, and the nudging to get to a place where we have some consistency across the board, and we have a level of comfort that doesn't require us to dedicate as much professional development time, but it just becomes part of what we do. So that's what we're working towards.
Okay, another one. So I don't know if this was somebody talking in my head, or if it was reality. And I was wondering, will Schoology have an element, a permanent element of Power School, where you can see the grades also for all the kids, instead of going to two sides?
Meaning, will you be able to access your Power School grades directly from Schoology, right?
That would be fine too.
Right now at this point, that's, that's not an option, they're two separate entities. You have your student management system, which is Power School, and you have your learning management system, which is Schoology. So they do talk to each other, but one is not embedded in the other yet. It's certainly, hopefully, something that can be integrated down the road, but right now, that's not a possibility through the program, but, good question.
That must have been that voice in my head then.
It's a good voice.
Ken, one of the reasons we did choose Schoology was because there is a tight, there's a tight integration between Power School and Schoology. So information is flowing from Power School to Schoology when it comes to enrollments, and when it comes to class enrollments and all that stuff, it's updated on an hourly basis. So student is enrolled in Power School, an hour later, they're in Schoology, or less than an hour later. The other piece, the one piece that flows backwards from Schoology to Power School is anything that the teachers might do as a quiz or a homework assignment or whatever, they grade that, they can map that back to their gradebook program in Power School. So we're, our, our teachers are not having to do dual entry into two systems when they're scoring particular things like that. So we're gonna see that grow as well. However, having one portal, unfortunately at this point, having one portal for grades within Schoology is not quite there yet.
All right, Karen?
So I do appreciate the time Nate and Angela took with me to get me going, and I will confess, I'm not an everyday user of Schoology, but my seventh grader is, and he's in that technology native-born cohort, and he uses it every day. My millennials at the high school, yeah, they're a little more reluctant about it, but, you know, they're busy too. I was really impressed with Ms. Luskey, who, in her embedded health class, they had a parent meeting for the sex ed piece, and I had to teach that night, so I couldn't go to that meeting. And so I messaged her, hey, I'm gonna miss this meeting, any chance you can put the documents in Schoology? And it was there within an hour, it was amazing.
So it sounds like Karen had a little two-on-one, of which not, not all of the tech savvy, half-tech savvy people can, so.
We might be able to make an exception for, for some special folks.
Which would be, which would be really, really nice for me, but, or for that one board member that has three kids. But how about the rest of the people out there in TV land that don't really have access to you as readily as Karen did? But if there was some way we can put it somewhere where someone can go link up and say, this is how I go, step, step, step?
And one thing Nate and I did, and actually many of us here on the digital learning team did, was at conferences, we are able to be available in the media centers for, for families, and that was kind of a first step. And because we were fairly new into having parents in, that was a first, kind of a first-round attempt at reaching out. We hope to in the fall, it'd be great to do a parent evening, where we allow parents to come in and just ask questions or have kind of an open forum, maybe several options at different schools. So certainly want to reach out and make sure that our, our process is transparent and that we are accessible and available, for sure. Thank you.
And here's my last one. So I was at a meeting with Linda Trummer earlier today, and when we talk about our goal of anytime, anywhere learning, and one of the surveys shows everybody's got some kind of a device at home, but her particular concern in terms of equity is that device, people have limitations on wireless and minutes and stuff like that, so how useful is that device to deliver the anytime, anywhere learning? And so, and then Hazel was talking, and I was just thinking, gee, great city partnership would be, we need just citywide wireless everywhere on demand. Wouldn't that be awesome? Wouldn't that be great? Yeah, 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 we're not gonna talk about that one. But as we move forward, the equity piece for the, the device that can actually do this is gonna be key.
I agree with you Karen, and that's one of the things that we've been grappling with a lot, what does access actually mean? And it's not simply having a device, and it's not relying on individual families to provide data plans to go with those devices either. So it's, it's a, it's not an easy question to answer, and there isn't necessarily one answer that fits all of the needs of all of our students. So we've tried a couple of things this year, and I think Angela can probably speak more to one of the pilot projects that we've tried at the high school this year, but that is, you know, that is something that we need to be intentional about when we go further with our expectations for students to engage in digital learning, to make sure that there are opportunities for all students to be able to do that. And one of our next plans that we've tried at the middle school this year is to try different platforms and different tools for different learning opportunities. We've really stuck to our, our belief that learning has to drive the device that we use, and that if that is an essential part of learning to be able to do it digitally, then everybody has to be able to use it. So there's carts of things, there's groups of things, there's different devices for different activities. Art has one option, and, and language arts has a different option. So just being very thoughtful and intentional about what access means, and that they have the right tool to do the right learning is, is where we, where we keep spending a lot of time grappling with and, and integrating our digital learning plan and our technology plan to make sure that that's clear. Do you wanna talk about HAP?
Yeah, so at the high school, we specifically worked with the HAP students and provided any of them that wanted to opt in with the Chromebook for pretty, I think it was right before the holidays, right before winter break. And the students were able to just take it home and see, we kind of checked in with them about two weeks ago to see how their access has been, how easy it's been for them to get access here at school, outside of school, and just to get some general feedback. And it was very interesting what they had to say and the, the information that came out of that. Really, that was just kind of an informal trial to see what would happen when we simply granted access. And so that has been an interesting group of students to work with, and they've all asked that it continue through the summer. So it's been, been very good, and both the middle school and high school have approached me recently about, and I've been working with them to develop digital learning action teams for next year, in which the staff will be directly asking the questions of what does access and equity look like in our building, what kind of program might we want to put in place, what does learning look like with those access, with that access and with the equity piece being pulled into that. So there's lots of good things being asked, and of course, we'll bring students into that as well to make sure we have a wall-rounded plan.
All right, thank you all for your presentation at the local St. Louis Park Business Council on Thursday morning. Bruce, Mr. Metz and I were there, and I refer to this as kind of an infrastructure year for our school district. So we're adding on to the, to the buildings, I think that's what people see. Some of those took a little longer than we wanted to, but they're gonna be there for next school year. The website has been updated, and Schoology has made tremendous progress, the Wi-Fi, tremendous progress. So thank you all for all you've done, I think we're gonna hit, hit the ground running into the 2015-16 school year, so thanks again. All right, next item on the agenda is the quarterly budget update. Sandy Saline will present that.
That's a little blurry, the most exciting stuff for last here. This is the quarterly report for March, and, and this will show the spending patterns, basically what this does. It shows the spending patterns from March of this year to March of last year to kind of show how our spending is and potentially where we might end up at the end of the year. And I'm gonna say potentially, because this is just a tool at this point, and spending patterns, you know, normally stay on the same spend, spending patterns during the year, but do have a potential to change throughout the year. And we could be spending more at March than we did in the prior year, which is, is showing for this current analysis that there is a slight spending more than we did in the prior year. I did take a look through some of the items to see what potentially could be happening. And there, you know, when you go line item by line item, there's just a difference in, in where the budgets are compared to where some of the expenditures are. For instance, for severance, they're paid out of the different programs, but we normally budget them through regular instruction because that's where normally all of our severance is paid out of, but there's other programs that also do incur severance also. So when you look at a line item by line item, potentially that could be a part of the problem. We do see a few spendings sooner than the prior year, and some of those expenditures, we do expect to get some reimbursements for also. So that's going to decrease that increase in spending pattern. There was some addition of some expenditures which we didn't anticipate during the budget amendment process. So that is going to increase that spending pattern, and, and anticipate that that increase will stick until the end of the year. But we did notice going through this analysis also was that there was some grant expenditures that are incurring this year that we didn't have the grant budgets, which doesn't affect the bottom line because there's expenditures and revenues both that did not get booked. So that's going to not have a negative effect on that bottom line. So with that, there's a potential, and I'm gonna say just a potential at this point, because the spending pattern can change from now until the end of the year, actually decrease in expenditures to make up for these increases. But there's a potential that we will probably spend a little bit more than what we anticipated during those budget amendment process, but I don't see it being a huge negative effect at this point. And with that, I've answered any questions anyone may have.
Any questions? Hearing no questions, thank you very much, Sandy, for the updates. Next item on the agenda is the 2016-2017 school calendar review. Rick Cryer, our Director of Human Resources, will be presenting a revised version of what we saw last meeting, I believe. There will be no action taking on it, taken on it this evening.
Board members, superintendent, yeah, we did want to bring back the contract, the teacher calendar again. There's one change. Um, there's one change, if I could get this thing to work again, uh, this happened to me last time. And, uh, the superintendent bailed me out last time and I wasn't paying attention because I was watching, I was watching what we were doing here. Um, primarily at the last contract or the last calendar we brought to you, um, had one glitch that we, uh, through getting more feedback with our other, with our other groups, uh, we found that the, the Good Friday holiday, which is currently still in some of our labor contracts, um, shows up, uh, in April 14th, um, which was listed as a school day and that would give us difficulty holding school on that day, uh, with our custodial contracts and some of our clerical contracts and other contracts that we have, um, going on. So what we did is we had a paid, uh, uh, day for a teacher, you know, teacher grading and reporting, um, work day that was being paid as the last day of spring break. We moved that paid day for teachers, uh, out, or paid day off for teachers to April 14th, which caused us to lose an instructional day. We then moved the, uh, last day for students from June 1st to June 2nd. So students are still getting out at a earlier time and a logical time and we're not bringing them back for one day, uh, you know, like a Monday, uh, on June, well, that would be June 8th. So, um, we think that this is a minor change to the contract. Uh, thankfully through the review process, we got a lot of feedback from other people. And this was just one of the things that we picked up, uh, before we actually brought the contract for the board to approve, or the, the calendar for the board to approve.
I was just going to say, we got, and I think you addressed some of, the calendar from some staff.
Sure.
And I wonder if you might just address a couple of those items that you didn't, so I mean, it was...
Sure, there, there was, um...
Some of it was the intangible, I don't know that you could address, which was, hey, it's, it's hotter in August than, than June. And but there's equally as many people I think who'd like to get out earlier than June and, so I don't know that you can really win on that battle. Uh, you're going to get 50/50, but...
We, we have to remember that the, um, uh, contract affects, you know, all the teachers, all the staff, all the parents, all the kids. And, um, we ran this, uh, through a lot of different feedback sources, one of which was also the exclusive representative for teachers, the Teachers Association. We did this through meet and fur, meet and confer with a number of meetings with them, going through the calendar. And the teachers brought this calendar to their membership. Apart from that, then, one or more teachers then, you know, decided, hey, I know what our teachers group said, but I have this concern, which again is, you know, their right to do that, but it's, it's, the teachers are talking kind of for the collective group of teachers and that person was talking for themselves.
Okay. I'm sorry, let me, let me follow up on that point then, just on a process. Was there a timing issue and how soon the district or the proposal came? I mean, was there adequate time, in your opinion, for like the Park Association of Teachers to, and I know you don't control that aspect of it, but by the time they got it, was there an ample amount of time for them to have it, review it, get comment from, and then before we came forward? I mean...
My sense is that there was ample time. We started the conversations in November. Uh, we threw out the option of, uh, what if we started before Labor Day? Um, we then took action only on one calendar. The, uh, six, the 15-16 calendar held the discussion for this calendar. Uh, then we went back to groups in January and February and we, we delayed bringing the calendar back to the board until April. Um, so there was a lot of conversation about what if, and then we found out that we could start before Labor Day. And, um, so I, I do believe that there have been a lot of opportunities for discussion and time.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Rick. I did check online what the average temperatures were in the last week of August and the first week of June. They were similar, slightly higher at the end of August, but very, not much, not much. Maybe the standard deviation, that's my next research, what was the standard deviation? All right, uh, the next item is Sandy's to speak to. It's the policy development, first reading of, uh, new policy 799, post issuance compliance policy and procedures.
Yes, this is, um, and actually I just want to, um, let the board know, you did get the procedures on top of the policy. The procedures are meant to be for the district administration and the policy is meant to be for your approval. Um, the procedures are just why, what the IRS is asking the district administration to do. So what is for approval tonight is just the first two pages. Um, and what this, um, post issuance debt compliance policy is, um, recommended by the Internal Revenue Service for districts to, um, to approve. Um, and, and what it, there was a change in an informational form that was changed a couple of years ago. That is a form that districts have to file with the Internal Revenue Service. Um, and on the form, they changed a, a statement on the form that you check if you have a district policy or not for debt compliance. And if you don't, um, it reds, it raises flags for the IRS that there's potential that there could be some issues with the district, which that isn't always the case, but it always, it's, it's something that the, uh, Internal Revenue Service would like to see that the district has policies for this in place. Um, and it also has a potential based on, um, our financial advisors' advice that if there is a compliance issue for any reason, which we're, do our best not to have any, um, that having this policy can actually, um, create a better situation with us, with the IRS. Um, there is 92 school districts that put this policy in place, many around us. In fact, Hopkins, Edina, Alda, Wayzetta, all around us have this policy put in place. Um, it has been reviewed by other districts, um, um, bond counsel, which is also our attorney also. So it has been, um, reviewed by the attorneys, um, that we all use, um, for this purpose and is currently being used by other districts as written. Um, and like I said, this is a recommendation by the Internal Revenue Service as well as our financial advisors.
Any questions? Nancy?
Yeah, I, I think this is our first reading, it's not actually on, for, on the agenda for voting today. And I, I just have one, um, suggestion within the policy and then it's picked up in the procedures. Um, it grants solely to the Director of Business Services, um, the authority to expend funds as needed to attend training or secure use of other educational resources for ensuring compliance such as consulting publications and compliance assistance. I am uncomfortable granting authority to one individual. I always believe in a double check and so I would like to see if we, if it is okay with, um, the folks that have to approve this, if we simply add with approval by the superintendent for any expenditures of funds for post issuance compliance in both places and then we get a double check on, on what's get, what will be spent for compliance.
I had the same question, thank you.
Nancy, where is that located?
Cindy, Cindy, I can show you my notes after.
So, so is that what we normally write or do we say superintendent or designate or...
I don't recall any other policies where we have granted authority to spend money to anyone, um, because all of our budgets come through, to the school board with recommendations. And so this struck me as very different with that kind of spending authority being granted without any supervision to anyone. I mean, it's not, I'm not picking on Sandy when I say that, I would have that same view, um, in general.
Cindy, it's actually on page 57, paragraph 2, expend funds as needed. I said the same thing, I'd like to see some language regarding superintendent and our school board reapproval, especially how we have other standards of amounts of money and the levels of approval.
It, it, it comes in the policy, it's right in that post issuance debt compliance policy heading, it's that first paragraph there. And then it comes up again, four paragraphs down from there where it talks about attending training and securing consults and et cetera, et cetera.
So, so to be clear, um, what is, what are, what is the action item for Cindy to consult with MSBA or to consult with our other policies to make them kind of you, more uniform or...
No, my suggestion is that we add the, that language, I'm not wed to the language, but, but I think it works, that any expenditures will also be approved by the superintendent. And once, I, I don't know if we have a problem with the IRS if we do that, I would think not. But that's the part about this I don't understand because of the bond compliance. I would think that we can do that and that's not an issue, but I wanted that, I wanted to know if it was an issue, it took us out of compliance.
And any changes that we make or the board recommends making, I will take it past, um, our bond counsel to make sure it doesn't have any effect. And I don't anticipate that that should have any effect.
Just to inform the board, I did check with MSBA to see if they had a policy of such and I was told that they've had many requests from many districts throughout the state of Minnesota. They ran it by their legal counsel, MSBA is not comfortable making a model policy because every district has specific things that they want to interject such as Director Goris just mentioned.
Thank you. Nancy?
And if we do that to the policy, obviously the procedures will need to be looked at, so that's built into the procedure because there are a couple of places where it's, it's there as well.
Okay, uh, anything else on that from the board? Go ahead, Cindy.
I assume you'd like me to format this to follow the, the style of our other policies before it comes for a second reading? Back with Chair Schweitzer.
Sounds good.
I don't know if we lose something in that reformatting that, that the bond counsel will have issues with. So that's, that's the question I have about that because this is sort of a unique thing. And you check with Julie Schweitzer.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Anybody have a motion to approve? Motion by Jim, seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion, any discussion, well, it's consent agenda, sorry. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie, 6-0. Uh, nothing on the action agenda, communications and trans...
Before we leave that though, uh, there was a retirement on there and I think we should certainly acknowledge that.
We have a retirement of Donna Leckler, lead cook at Aquila, 29 years of service. So I think, uh, Mr. Metz and Mr. Morrison have some overlap there with, uh...
Well, I was going to say, I was over at Aquila on Friday, ran into Donna, who's been in the lunchroom at Aquila for how, 29? Long time. And, uh, wished her a happy retirement and she told me she was going to retire. And I'm the former principal at Aquila, so I knew Donna well and worked with her for a long time. And I'm happy to see her going to have an opportunity to enjoy some time. Sounds like they're going to do some traveling and enjoy some time away from school, so best wishes to Donna.
And I also worked with Donna quite a few times, um, with our Quillabee pancake breakfast, um, for the last five years and, um, have known her for the last 10 years, uh, with our kids going through there. So, um, she is going to enjoy Mexico more for a longer period of time now instead of just the week or two weeks that she's been taking. And, um, she is a, a really joy to be with in the kitchen while we work and just, uh, talk about things. She's a really, really fun person to be around.
You know, I just thought of one other thing, we, before we let Donna go, we better give her credit for her latest greatest innovation, which is unbelievably awesome, is breakfast on a cart at Aquila. If you ever get a chance, uh, to be at Aquila in the morning for breakfast, instead of bringing all the kids down to the lunchroom for breakfast, they deliver it to the classrooms and, uh, they got a grant a few years ago that provided for the equipment, the rolling equipment to, to, uh, bring the food to the kids and it is fantastic. So give Donna great credit for being flexible and innovative and coming up with a brand new way to, to serve breakfast.
So congratulations. Moving on to communications and transmittals, Nancy?
Yeah, just, just following a little bit on the consent agenda, which we normally don't comment on, but, but now it's in communications and transmittals, so it's okay. And just so it doesn't get lost, on that, uh, consent agenda was the, um, school board's approving of Scott Myers as the new high school principal. And we heard from him at the beginning of the meeting and everybody who hadn't met him got to meet him and thought it was a good process well-run and, and, um, looking forward to seeing Scott serve us for years to come.
I have two things. I know I sound like a broken record. However, I am not a fisherman. I haven't caught too many fish. I cannot understand how three guys could go out in a boat over the weekend and not catch any fish and still not come up with a framework for the budgets for K-12 education. Uh, these guys were out together and, uh, between the House, the Senate and the governor, they have not yet got a framework. There is one week to go. This is highly important right now for everyone to be in communication with these legislators. The governor has the best package, the Senate has next, but it's not good enough, and the House is the worst. And it is a terrible situation when these people can't even see to fund our kids 1%. Give us a break here. If you are in contact, the suggestion is please contact the governor, please contact the House Majority Leader and the, and the Senate Majority Leader and let them know that it's the governance, the governor's package at $600 million that public education needs. When you do that, also please copy your local senator and representative so that they know that you're in touch with the leadership. That will also be very, very helpful. So if you can do that this week, it is not too late. If they cannot come to agreement by Monday, then they need to go into special session. Uh, I would love to have the miracle occur that they come in, come to agreement, but sitting in a boat all day not catching any fish and they still don't have agreement. But keep working them, I think they can get to it and we need the governor's proposal. Uh, second thing I have, I'm still asking for money. Uh, gratitude greetings goes on every year at this time, uh, from the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation. Uh, what gratitude greetings is, at the end of the school year, you can express your appreciation to a teacher. A gift of $10 or 20 or 30 or however much you can afford. And you don't have to limit it to one teacher, you can send it to multiple teachers, 10 bucks a pop. But whatever you can give to the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation, this is the time to do it. And you can go to the, uh, website, that's S-L-P-P-S-F dot org. And there you can go to gratitude greetings and give right over the, over the internet. And it really is a powerful thing and to thank our teachers, we usually do about $6,000 a year in this. Uh, we're in a little bit under this year, so if we can make it 10,000, we sure appreciate it. Thank you all for your contributions and thank you to our teachers for all that they do. do.
Just gonna follow up on what, on what Bruce said, and Jim, you're good with the language, but doesn't the constitute, I know the Constitution has something in it that, that places public education at a priority.
There are only two things. Roads and schools.
Roads and schools, and here we are in a funding year with a surplus in the state of Minnesota, and we can't even get the, our, our elected officials to agree on a 2% increase for public education. I'm not talking one, I think they ought to do two. I think it's unconscionable, and it, it boggles the mind about the priorities of some of the folks that are politicking up at the state capitol, and they need to, they need to wake up and fund education for our kids.
Yeah, I've got plenty. I wanna invite people to the Children First Ice Cream Social on Sunday, May 17th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at Wolf Park. I'll be scooping, a bunch of other people with me will be scooping, it's a great time. Come on out. Talking about Children First assets, asset number 23, homework, and boy, the middle school kids did amazing homework. They had a great event last, earlier in the week, their IB community service projects and student action team presentations. They did prog, projects on child education, Somalia, LGBTQ plus issues, school supplies for Africa, child labor, gifted and talented education. Carrie, Rob, did you get the video link from those kids yet?
I did not.
Okay, it's a good one. We are Rafiki's, multiple myeloma, autism and special ed. And the kids did presentations to the community, as well as had the trifold boards with research and critical thinking on display. And they, they not only worked at it in school, but they hauled these things home and back and forth to keep doing their research. And it was amazing teamwork in action. I just totally love IB. So that was, that's a good one. And then we had the school board listening session last week, Joe and I, and one person visited and talked about the SEEDS inaugural meeting and Earth Day, and there were speakers here in room C-350. There is a kid in our high school who's doing quite interesting work with, trying to get an aquaponics grant going, Chris Trotter. So he's, he's part of the board for SEEDS as well as Health in the Park Initiative. So good job, Mr. Trotter. Thank you very much, everybody.
I've got one, one item here, the Susan Lindgren Imagination Inventors Fair was last week. 224 students registered for it, and about 550 people attended. My son and I were there. I'm hoping to recruit him for next year, and for the next five years, actually. And I think what, from what he saw, I think he might be hooked, so. But the, the reason I wanted to bring this up, this is a tribute to Ken Morrison here, because I think he challenged, at one point he challenged the Susan Lindgren.
Yes.
School here, so, so they had six master recyclers from St. Louis Park to process the waste from the event. There were 119.4 pounds of compost, 15.3 pounds of recycling, which is bottles, cans, paper, aluminum foil, 8.7 pounds of trash, for a total of 143.4 pounds. So if you didn't catch that, of the 143 pounds.
Eight pounds.
8.7 pounds was trash. So 94% of the waste was recycled. So great job, not just from the recycling aspect, but from the projects. Projects looked great, there was a lot of candy, maybe that was a bad thing, but there was a lot of candy. But yeah, it was a really cool event, and you know, I'd seen it at Susan Lindgren, at Peter Hobart, I should get over to Aquila and see it, see it there as well, that would be my next, next one to see, but it was a great, great event. Anybody else in communications? So yeah, with, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Ken. Seconded by Karen. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes six, oh. Good night.